Thank you for your patience. This is the East River Administrative Association for Wednesday, August 17th, 2022. We are returning from executive session where we discussed elected bargaining with the East River Administrative Association matters related to the employment of a particular corporation and the employment history of four particular individuals. We have some questions.
Yes, new item are under 12, requiring board action, 1.0 FD, secondary special education position recruitment within the tenure area of children in general special education. And two new items, O and P, under 12, requiring board action, if they place unders under four items requiring board action.
Moving on to item four.
Can I suggest the possibility of moving the profession of the proposed ability project of earlier?
So, according to B, under nine, reports and discussions on the proposed capital project to five superintendent comments.
Any other requests? Okay, moving on to item four, items requiring board action. Item M, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the probationary 1.0 FD administrative position in the tenure area of assistant principal 3K through 12. I'm wording this terribly, my apologies. We're appointing Chelsea Kelski to that position. May I have details in your agenda?
No move.
Move by Mr. Cassidy. Second by Mr. Stilwiler. Discussion. All those in favor? I propose extension. Carrie Six Zero, welcome and congratulations. Item N, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education appoint Andrea Parker to the probationary 1.0 FD administrative position in the tenure area of assistant principal 3K through K through 12. May I have a motion? Move by Ms. Stilwiler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. All those in favor? I propose extension. Carrie Six Zero. Item O, superintendent recommends that the Board of Education appoint Alicia Fowler to a 1.0 FD position in the tenure area of elementary education. I have details in your agenda. I have a motion. Move by Ms. Stilwiler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I propose extension. Carrie Six Zero. Item P, superintendent recommends the Board of Education appoint Cassidy Janis Sut...
Janodestky.
Janodestky. Thank you, Janodestky. Gelled my focus. Pointing Cassidy Janodestky to a 1.0 FD position in the tenure area of elementary education as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion.
No move.
Move by Mr. Cassidy. Second. Second by Ms. Stilwiler. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I propose extension. Carrie Six Zero. Thank you all for being here. Lovely to be here. Moving on to item five. Item R. Item R, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education appoint Madison Winter to the position of 1.0 FD, secondary professional education teacher at Chita in your agenda. Do you have a motion?
No move.
Do you have a motion, Cassidy? Second. Second by Ms. Stilwiler. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I propose extension. Carrie Six Zero. All right, so now moving on to item five, superintendent.
Yeah, so before we get to our president here, I would just like to make just a few comments. I'd like to start off by saying that we have a recognition tonight to one of our board members, Dan Brunson, who has been recognized for 20 years of dedicated service and commitment to public education in Western New York. And actually, this is his 53rd year with the district as a teacher administrator and now 20 years as a board member. So Dan, we're very grateful for everything that you've done, for all the support and giving us new facilities projects you've been through. And we're just really grateful that you continue this serve. It's a lot of work. Congratulations. Just a few other comments quickly. Just wanted to bring up the idea of a board retreat. I know we talked about it a little bit, so I was trying to put it out there, so maybe we can bring it up. It's part of a next conversation. You have moments to talk with some of you, and we got some really good ideas, so I think maybe we can just kind of start with the classes, so we can give something helpful for the block. And we could line up something with the administrators as well. Just want to thank all the people that have been in over the summer for a variety of trainings, and most recently, we've done some things in restorative practices in Keegan Training, which is a block return. Really great participation. Was able to sit in on some of the restorative practices, training, and I got to tell you, I was really blown away by what they were able to do and the progress they made. It's four days of training. So this initial group is about 25 teachers from K to eight that came in, were going to be working with high school in fall. But just, I don't know. Sproung, until I can comment out?
Sure. No, it was four wonderful, fantastic days to have that many teachers come with the energy that they brought. But our presenter, Ori DeCarlo, was phenomenal. She mixed it up the days without a bat. And it was just really exciting because the focus this year is all community building. It's not about, you know, the changing discipline or anything like that. It's all about really building that community within the classroom. And we learned all kinds of strategies that teachers can use instructionally to have these community circles, as well as getting to know each other. It was fun. And we had a great, great time. But the best part about it for me, that we walked out of there in our team at the middle schools, we actually have an action plan. We have meetings set up once a month all the way through June. They're non-negotiables, so no matter what, if only five people can make it, those five people are still going to meet. We just have a really concrete plan moving forward that we're very excited about. The energy is very high. So I don't know if I hauled it, sorry.
We had the tremendous opportunity for some of our staff to build relationships amongst each other, was so apparent in some of the strategies. And I'm just really excited, and I know our teachers are excited, to take that back into the class and continue to just encourage relationship building amongst the classrooms. So it was wonderful, this game, wonderful.
Yes, it was a great program. We came in, same thing, we just did that over the last couple days. Again, Keegan Strategies, really valuable, we'll see in class. We've seen a lot of participants, and so I'm really curious about that as well. We went on a retreat, and we really had a chance to kind of get together and talk a little bit about what the career looks like. It's very exciting, a lot of recent practices, a lot of technology going on, and it's just news in terms of the upgrades that we're seeing. Website is absolutely fantastic, we have a great website, we're interested in that. Doug's doing really great work with our facilities, they've had a lot of projects that have launched. I just downloaded that today, as a matter of fact, and very much, yes. Doug's crew has done a great job with facilities in terms of, we have new spaces for some of our employees, so they've remodeled those, compared to the market force of a hundred hiring, lots of interviews with some that you can see here today, and a bunch of people with us that we're really excited about. And Justin's done a really great job with, again, just reminding of the variety of professional development opportunities for the staff, and so a lot of good things going on. Really exciting special ed, things going on. Never ending, never ending. And again, 3K stuff is super exciting, every four sections of 3K, and everybody that applied got in, so we're really happy about that as well. So we're really excited to have our 3K teachers with us today, and so it's exciting to get that product working, running. So that's it.
Moving on to the crowd.
Oh yeah, and I'll go second. The Board of Education received a written summary of all the professional activities that the administration extended from July, June. So you received a summary.
Most impressive, the initiative that our people take to keep current and to, on their own, continue this lifelong learning that we're all trying to, as part of the goals. If they are a credit to this concept, and it has to have, they have to say that their teachers, their administrators are all learning throughout life, hopefully.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, next up, Steve, Stephen, and Jared. Nice to know, they're going to recap the city project, even doing a great job carrying us along for this date, or just let them kind of go ahead. And so Steve's ready to go with the modified presentation, and then we'll have questions, and then we'll be ready to report.
Glad, appreciate the introduction, and once again, happy to be back here. This should be a little bit shorter of a presentation than the one we've given in the past, but the real important part here is to summarize what we've presented over the last three months, what we've seen and been a part of in terms of discussions, revisit the budget very briefly, the information from the last, and then just sort of lay out what the schedule would be tentatively here from now until December. So the scope, first off, what are the needs of the project moving forward? Building by building, Parkdale Elementary, focus really, and this applies to all the buildings in the district, safety and security with PA systems, clock systems, and security cameras, in addition to a small amount of mechanical work. That mechanical work is primarily focused around air conditioning for IT closets, to make sure that equipment doesn't fail when it's running at full capacity. Give or take around $800,000 impact in sculpt work at Parkdale. Here at the middle school, once again, PA system and clocks, in addition to fire alarm upgrades, HVAC improvements and replacements, roof replacements on the 1997 portion of the building. One of the more fun pieces that we talked about at some length is the renovations to this space here in the library. What that means is really converting this from a traditional library, it's more of a contemporary media center. So integrating books with technology, multimedia, flexible learning spaces for students. Interesting part about this library, just as a refresher, this used to be the original building auditorium. So above the ceilings here is a double height space with some of this plaster work that's actually still there over where the old stadium, Centennial used to be. The building was actually open from one side to the other, and one of the major goals of the project would be to, in addition to making it a more functional educational space, really bring it to, back to some historical relevance from the original construction. A few weeks ago, Stephen pulled together a concept rendering. Obviously, this may change as we get into details, but what you're looking at could potentially be what we'd be looking at straight that way. So this glass or glaze to size where the old stage opening and Centennial opening would be, our thought would be to open this entire area up two stories, create a new reception circulation desk at 1M, and have the center space here primarily for multiple flexible uses, power and table data, and then rearrange offices and bookstap spaces around the outside, creating a centralized zone though. But we haven't met with anybody yet, so this could change dramatically. This is just an artist's rendering. You know what artists like, fanciful ideas carry around.
And finally, which is a professional outlook, and I know this is just an artist's rendering, but in terms of our library and stuff, how many of these books will do any significant change?
It really would come down to what's needed. What we've found in some spaces, in some media centers and libraries, is that there's already sections of books that the librarians and staff just kind of leave in a corner because they're never checked out. There's a history of what's taken out and what isn't very often, and so it's an opportunity to revisit stacks and see if there's media and books that are not relevant anymore, that aren't used, put them in storage, do something else with them, maybe bring in fresh literature in its place. But there's, even looking around the library here, you have a lot of stacks that are not 100% full. So there's a lot of square footage in area where with better storage and better stack technology, we could open up more floor space without really losing any quantity of books.
Just a quick question, the double doors that you see there, those are not those double doors?
No.
So that area right there would keep going along with the offices this way.
Everything here would be reconfigured, we'd be relocating offices to another space in the room, but yeah, doors flanking on both. Other work in the building, really the emphasis here is completing work that was started in previous projects. And what that means is the remaining toilet rooms, remaining bathrooms, remaining hallways, especially the first floor hallway, you come into the entrance down here, there's all that wonderful tile work, but then it just sort of stops. And carrying that through the rest of the first floor, first floor classroom renovations, office renovations, and then some renovation through the west gym, obviously being very limited in those renovations, but very concerned, but much needed safety improvements for wall pads, scoreboards, backboards, lighting, and sound systems. Toilet room elevator upgrades, they're lovely, and making sure the elevator is able to fit functioning for many years. At the high school, once again, we're repeating, repeating myself, fire alarm systems, PA system, clocks, that really was consistent. Couple more flashy improvements, but ones that are very much needed. If you can remember the conversation at the last presentation, the one item that is very heavily flagged on the building condition survey report would be existing tennis courts due to the failure of the asphalt and the water issues there. So this project involves redoing the tennis courts, relocating them. An updated schematic diagram from the last meetings with a relocation of new, six new tennis courts directly to the east of the football field and track, with a new turf field directly to the south of that, which are all oriented directly north-south. The intention and hope would be that this is planning for a long-term goal and a long-term project with a future potential baseball, softball, additional turf area closer to the east side of the site. And the dash lines here are actual cross-country course. So we found the map of, you know, where your cross-country thing is currently run, and wanted to make sure that a lot of our reorientations did not impact in a negative way those existing courses. Hopeful, very budget dependent and existing position dependent would be to maintain and keep two of the existing courts to try to get to a spot where you have eight functioning tennis courts, so that you could use the main courts for competitions, while the community potentially still uses the other two courts, or additional practice space or gym space as well. A lot of questions.
We don't know yet still whether B is going to be in that location or...
Correct, and we won't really know that until after we get in testing. So what that will involve is taking cores of the actual asphalt and finding your best areas that have the most, the longest lifespan left, and keeping notes.
And distant, I remember D is in the current.
D is in, yes, turf field is in the current plan, and that field is sized for lacrosse and field hockey, but also soccer to be the same size soccer field as is on the main field, so that you can use the two fields simultaneously as a 1A, 1B setup. There's lights. The lights on the field are at budget, at budget allowance. There are definitely lights at the tennis courts, lights for the field are budgetary and part of that incidental gap concern. So, I was going to slip to this slide earlier with the summary on it, so I didn't have to read everything, but in summary, the general concept, and then, I didn't mention it before, but the hope of reopening some of the old drainage ditches in that area in the center to create a more communal center space, maybe with some water, trees, landscaping, shading as well that comes from that, in an effort to create sort of a central athletic community space in between the fields for everyone to use.
How does that happen to the 300% of them? Will they just run up this?
It would be, yeah, it would be sized, it would be sized to fit, so. How wide that gets, yeah.
Wide enough.
Yeah. Where we start that here, and where we stop it, and where we go here is all artist's rendering. So, planning for the unknown, the comment about the lights leads into this. The current bidding market, as we've mentioned before, is extremely volatile. Steve could talk to that, probably ad nauseam here. What we've done is recommend that certain items are maintained as alternates for consideration. If we get favorable bids, there are additional items in the project that were very high on the desired needs list as things were vetted. Those could include turf field lighting, feature replacement of the high school pool, athletic hallway renovations at the high school, classroom renovations at Parkdale, among a few others, that once again, if money is available as we get into the project, we see what we find, what we get in testing, find a lot of unsuitable structure or bad soils, we'll be using up all the contingency money in the first portion of the project, but if we get lucky, maybe we can tackle some of this. So having those included gives us some flexibility as we move forward. Where does that leave us with the budget? I think the biggest thing and the biggest takeaway, the total up to $22.3 million. So with some of the revised numbers, talking about enlarging the turf field to make soccer fit, the numbers fluctuated a little bit from the last presentation, but the bottom line, that $22.3 is unchanged. What that means, not using the entire $13.6 million in existing capital reserves, covering the largest portion of the project that way, the remaining balance in the project would be covered under a tax impact, but not to exceed 1% on the left. That was pivotal in this calculation, making sure that we fit everything in without exceeding that 1% marker. And we're confident in the numbers here that Rick Dancy provided, you two talked about that last time, and what that means for the project in general scope. Schedule, where we're at now, we're in August, we have the scope relatively finalized, a lot of those moving parts and pieces have been sort of put to bed. If there's questions, obviously, we're always happy to answer them and revisit things. At this point, August 17th, we're in the middle of the process, or rather, the district's consultants are in the middle of completing and finalizing secret documents, which will be then received by the board at a later date, and formal approval then granted, to approve that at that point in time, with a target of a December vote. However, it's been laid out at this point. And we'll talk about construction later. Sure. We'll figure that out as we get there, but we'll obviously be very conscious of the impacts of the school as scheduled for the design project Friday.
It was the reunion we done, and we had approximately 60.
60?
And it was primarily the class of 1972. So they were the class, this was high school, and then halfway through their senior year, I believe, or their junior year, they went up to the high school, then high school, but this is what they consider the high school, I could be wrong on that. But anyways, they had a lot of great talks, I learned a lot about a lot of teachers they remember. In a closet that apparently had a pet monkey in it that got loose one time and hit a kid. I don't know, that's what one gentleman told me. Dan, I was going to ask you about that later. But more than just a monkey. Okay. But the nice thing is, yes, the conversation, the positivity, especially in the renovation of this space, was very high, and they're actually wanted to talk about baskets that they would like to do and maybe make some sort of donation towards the library, you know, the functional scheme or something like that. So nothing official at this point, but we're going to be in touch in the next couple of months. Yeah, it was wonderful though.
Well, every time I've done a tour of 50-year classes over the past 10 years or so, they all expressed the same willingness to help.
Yep.
So we can contact people from the previous 50-year reunions, going back a few years, they'll, they remember this as an auditorium, your folks. In 72, this was already, right, close to where it looks like now, right? So they were, they would have been about eight years old when one of this renovation. It was fun.
At least they didn't think the library was big.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yes, powerful.
I haven't, I haven't said, I think I said the draft version over to you, but yeah.
That was so succinct, that's really good. Appreciate the artist's rendering of the library, he designed our place. We need everybody to think about the vision of what it means.
That's all, Stephen.
You got to put together a little committee to work on the sales.
Absolutely, so with any of these major design components, you know, it's committees will be formed, whoever is, wants to be a part of it, needs to be a part of it, there's multiple stakeholders, from individual teachers to librarians, principals, to board members, sometimes even students, and go through a whole round of meetings with them, backfinding mission meetings, and then present initial designs, get their feedback, see what works, what doesn't work, and then sort of refine the design from there before anything's done.
That comes after the vote.
That comes after the vote.
We are meeting tomorrow still, Michael?
Yes.
Steve, question on construction planning preliminary, and so we'll be getting together, Justin and I, with the design team of this year, coming up with preliminary facing plans, logistics, safety information, so that when we go out with voters, you can explain to them how the project is going to be implemented, and still keep it safe, and you know, minimal disruption to the educational process, all those things. So we're working on those, and we'll come through.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
It's been a hardworking, informative summer. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for moving us up to your depth.
Good for you, Steve. Moving on to item six, former president and board member comments. Just like to congratulate Dan for all of your service and say thank you, because no matter what your role has been, you've been a longtime leader in this community.
because no matter what your role has been, you've been a longtime leader in this community. Fortunately, I thank you for all the guidance you shared, but I know many have benefited from your service and all.
You're so kind, I think, but my approval is actually, I think I did four.
Question. Um, I along with Mrs. Daniel and Mrs. Infroda attended the, what's it called, law conference? A week or so ago. Um, so I think we, I think we can make sure we share the information with everyone. I think the PowerPoints and other supporting materials will be helpful to board members. Uh, Mr. Brown and several other administrators are also there, so I'm sure he'll be sharing with your team. Uh, I noticed that the, the audience for this one shifted a little bit. It was much more skewed to administrators and attorneys. And in the past, in the past, we've had more board members, so they, it, it shifted a little bit. Um, Jay Verona was as informative as always and just to hear that man's speaking, tell us what we need to be watching out for was, was worth the day.
See how he says, you don't want to be.
Don't, you don't want to be on my list next year, yes.
You were one, I gave her one reason.
Don't want to be on my list next year.
Be sure to share the information with. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you very much.
Um, I also like echo what um he was on beside to Dan, you are living, walking with the media. Nobody else this district is better than you too. And just knowing that we have someone to go to anytime anyone else has a question, like a closet. I mean, we live there such a passage in this district.
So thank you for, for your remarks, but so after the meeting tonight, I'll tell you about more animals.
Um, Mrs. Infroda and I met with Ms. Lyons, Ms. Lyons and Mr. Perfume about the new eighth grade English novel selection. It's called, it's a novella and it's called Seed Folks. Um, it's going to an, it's going to be anchor text in the multicultural unit that's going to start the school year. And one of the things that it's going to do is do these cultural bags where students have to bring in certain themes that we read to who they are as a way to kind of um learn more about students, but also to have students learn more about what I'm talking about. Um, and this novel, novella, that stands in New York State hopefully responsive education. Um, I actually read it, it's a really, really good novella. So if anyone would like me to send you the one which gave it, let me know.
Um, it's been a busy month. I would just add that I audiobooked it, so I listened to it on audiobook and that made it just absolutely amazing. Because it was many different voices from many different places and it was excellent. So I recommend the audiobook version of that.
Which, Kathy?
Not for that.
Right, um, I neglected to bring up Mr. Flowers' comments about our project, so I'm going to read that now. Um, to, to Brian Penden and stuff. Uh, he was unable to attend this evening. Um, I certainly support all actions on the agenda that require board approval. Having said that, I stated publicly on several occasions, my support for the capital project, renovations to the classrooms, bathrooms, rooms, and security systems are essential to enhancing learning environment. The proposed changes to the library and media center will create excitement to the learning process and will make school, well, school, something to be proud of for decades to come. Upgrading our facilities are essential to our school district's long-term success. This particular capital improvement project is another step in the right direction. In addition, the state requires school districts to maintain their facilities and back up the requirement by covering a portion of the allowable cost of the capital improvements and our 86% of the cost. Financially, in the best interest of the taxpayers, that we do our due diligence by presenting this project and future projects to the community for their consideration. Thank you, Mr. Flowers, for your comment. Mr. Perfume?
Thank you. Uh, I have some remarks from Mr. Flowers as well. Uh, he and I attended the, the audit committee meeting, which occurs this time of year. All on his behalf, preparing for the audit that's done, hoping so. Uh, so there is a requirement that we have a pre-conference with the auditors. This all goes back to what, uh, the change in regulations that require, um, that we want for, for proposals regarding audit duty services every five years. And of course, the last time we contracted with EWB for the services and we'd know with them each year prior to the audit. And then we meet with them again when the audit is presented to you in a, to, to distinct education department by the 16th of October. Uh, we, we had superintendent at our meeting and AJ Block, who's a member of the audit committee, and Paul Flowers. Uh, the, um, uh, our internal auditor, Tom, who was not able to attend, uh, but we will have him at our next meeting prior to, prior to presenting the audit. He will present his final risk assessment for, for, uh, for your consideration. And again, this goes back to the same legislation. Uh, by the way, the same legislation that requires our new board members to attend those two trainings, one in financial, uh, responsibilities, the other in governance, also created the requirement that we have an internal auditor. So as an internal auditor for several years, and we'll look forward to his report. Uh, the main purpose of the meeting was to air for the audit and answer any questions that the audit committee might have and also for the audit committee to be able to express any concerns that, as the audit. Uh, the, uh, we, we spent a fair amount of time discussing, suddenly Paul's remarks here. Fair amount of time discussing the challenges facing school districts as we move forward from the federal cares fund. So the, the, uh, you all know that, uh, that, uh, the district needs a task plan for replacing those funds in a, in a way that's, uh, that would not the district. Look forward to that. Uh, they, so that, that was basically it. We talked a little bit about unbalanced management and, um, and, uh, the meeting was. So I thank AJ for his participation as a committee member and so, uh, and we look forward to the next meeting.
Okay, that's good. Um, I attended, in addition to the county support association conference, I attended the New York State School Board Summer Law Conference on July 28th, 29th. And the nice thing about that is that didn't, I was able to choose by 14 years, having different things. They covered teacher shortages and then school district record keeping. There's a major world question right now and that focused on school. But other than focusing on the major base side of the street or, and the cases for New York State, they also focused on different cases, so it was kind of nice to have different, um, different, uh, areas that were covered. So I do have off-the-plate ones from that. Encouraged us to share it, so I can maybe have Jackie, at least have one stat. Thankfully, very. Thank you.
Sure. Just wanted to put it up to, uh, I don't know, tell me now if anyone's interested, just to let Sue or Jackie know or, uh, the council conference. Just to, just let Jackie or Sue know, uh, that you're interested in attending. It's in Syracuse this year, which is basically really easy. I know sometimes when it's in New York, it's a little place, but, um, you know, so whenever you have a chance, because sometimes it does go fast, nominations.
Moving on to administrator comments. Have anything with D?
I always have some, sorry. Um, just a few things, first of all, I've had a decent with Dan. Um, this is ad-libbing, sorry Jackie, it's a little busy. Um, but, um, especially over the past three years, I've been on a lot of committees with Dan, going back to the capital project. I've always admired him, but to get to know him firsthand, truly is exceptional and you make a big difference. Thank you for all the, thank you. Um, and then a few exciting times are coming up in the next few weeks. Obviously, school starts in September. Uh, and we are, we were excitedly to send out these student schedules today at the mall, middle school. So we know that the, the buzz will be in the air. Um, and we have supply drop-off and walk your schedule day coming up in the end of August, where students will be able to come with their families, walk around the school, walk their schedule, put their supplies in their locker, and we may or may not have an ice cream truck in the parking lot. So we'll see if that, uh, if that really happens. But feel free to come and just saying helps a good time. And we have our new student orientation. And this year, we're trying something new with new students that are new in the district, where we're going to do our typical meet and greets, but we're going to have our PTO representative stay and just meet with the parents and give them advice on being a parent in a store or a, and living in a store, and maybe some ideas or things that they like or things to, for them to try, just to create based connections. And then Mr. Live Rock and I are going to take our new students and we're going to do a community circle with them, um, which will enhance community building within those. At this point, we believe we have 17 students that will be there, um, across grade levels, just to, to build that community and get to know them a little bit and allow them to get to watch. So excited about that. And the last time I have is just to thank, um, you know, a lot goes into the summer. It's funny how there's that misconception that you just get to hang out in the summertime in schools and that's, I couldn't tell you that's, there's nothing further from true. Um, our buildings and grounds crew, Joe McPike, our lead custodian and Doug's crew, unbelievable. Um, it's unreal how hard they work and how they make this building look and they're always smiling. And, you know, I'm almost walking on wet wax and they don't freak out, they help us, um, they're just wonderful. Um, and then the teachers, like Mr. Ross explained earlier, the training. Every day, there's been teachers in here working, giving their classroom strategy or learning themselves to become even better teachers than they already are. So I appreciate that. But most importantly, Amy and Bethy, the two in the office at the middle school, they are unbelievable. Um, the amount of work that they do every day, getting these student schedules ready, um, is just, they're, they're phenomenal. So I just want to make sure that all those people are recognized. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just echo his recognition and I did send the comments to you. They're on there. I, uh, thank you to Doug and Steve, thank you so much for the work that they're doing as well. And, um, super impressed with our teachers and the amount of teachers that signed up for professional learning throughout the summer. It was just incredible from, and we've worked with planning the co-teaching piece and, um, our upcoming writing piece. We're just so excited to see the group of instructional, um, just instruction being the center of what we're doing. And so that's just contagious and really exciting to see. We have a few things, we have our, our pre-K meet and greet, meet the teacher, um, on, uh, September 6th. So come on out and get to know some of our new pre-K professionals. And, uh, we have our kindergarten supply drop-off on the 6th and then informational night for parents on the 7th. Uh, we also have our open house with the two weeks of the, uh, school kick-out. So parents will be able to, uh, bring those supplies for cake, um, for, excuse me, for first grade and fourth grade at that time. And, uh, we're just really excited about a wonderful school year. It's, it's been a lot of work this summer, but, um, our office, yeah, has been incredible also. Me too will be getting those letters out tomorrow and the excitement in the air. But we've worked really, um, collectively with parents, um, in the beginning as well as the teachers. We're really, um, craft classes that, that are amazing and we're excited. We'll, we'll have, um, four new classes or three new classes that are building and lots of new teachers. So we're just excited to welcome everyone, including our new assistant principal.
Thank you, Mr. Perfume. Mr. Brown, you said you had 17 new students. Um, this is so hard, you know, I'm telling you, I'm just sure.
No, I know, um, we have, uh, I would, I would say around close to 15. As I'm going through and I'm placing, I've got about six folders on my desk to play. But about, I would say, close to 20-ish. There's quite a few new students, new families in the community. And, and of course, all of our pre-K families are new, so.
Thank you.
Okay, sure, next. Um, hi, I see a whole one. Um, I had a whole interesting thing that I want to talk about tonight and we already touched on one. Along with your website, our new district app rolled out. Um, there was a little delay in that because that was very pretty cool about having approvals. So we have both the roots and hurdles, but we are approved. Um, if you go to the App Store, um, on your iPhone or iPad, or if you go to the Google Play Store, search for East Rar schools, you'll find it. You can set up for notifications on there. And just like, you know, when Channel 2 gets you a notification, it'll all pop up. You can get permission to store too, to know about school events, things coming up, maybe postings. Um, and also we have a lot of information on the sports schedules, events, the district calendar, contact all our teachers, um, all of our news, it's, it's wonderful. So it's right at your fingertips and it's a replication on our website in more mobile view. Um, so very excited that that's out, to use that heavily, um, as people become aware of it. Um, we have been working very hard all summer and I can't say enough, I know a lot of company, our staff, but truly I need to do the same thing. Um, there are nine people in our group and every one of them has been working very hard. We had 600 Chromebooks come into the district, our staff and students, um, refreshed this year. Um, 200 laptops for all of our faculty, their, all of the image inventory tagged, um, and distributed. Um, we have installed across the district 200 adoptable stations for our teachers and technical staff in a, a second screen that is covered by just one cable, allowing them to, um, charge and have a dual screen situation while they're working, which if anyone has been on a two-screen going back. Um, so we're very happy to have that all in place. Um, we have purchased a new A D system for this room, um, allowing for live streaming um, to be built into the ceiling fixtures. Um, yeah, we're working on getting now speakers and application for within the room. Um, that will, we have a hit off the, that's September, so that is rolling out. We also did purchase two of these cameras to allow us to have a better live feed for events at Parkdale, at the middle school, that gives us more mobility. And this one will be, um, hardwired in so that for all of your needs, we are ready to kick it on the go and, and it will, uh, auto, uh, adjust the levels and the camera will do its nice swiveling. We'll use the AI technology, so it'll be top of the line and give a much better product to our live viewers, students. Now, this is a substantial expectation. Um, so that's all moving forward, sorry, there's a question. Uh, we have installed presentation stations in all of our administrative offices, um, allowing them to have more comfortability, rather than get a small screen. Each has been given a TV with a Chromebox, allowing them to have groups come in and work with them and analyze data and watch training together. Um, so those are all pulling in. Also spent quite a bit of time on compliance, um, being the data privacy officer. It's kind of, never wanted to do this, but it's become my bread and butter and I'm really enjoying it. Um, District 5, we have more protected application for Edward Stafford turned on now. We installed, uh, to install a backup server for all of our network shared data. We purchased a backup solution, uh, we're pending installation on that. So anything Google related is on a third-party service so that if Google does have a failure and we have our data in a safe, secure place elsewhere. Um, we have upgraded our firewall just last week, implemented and installed two new virtual posts last week, consolidating four virtual posts down in two. It sounds like tech jargon, but it's a really good deal. Um, weekly updates have begun working on servers that was not in place before. Um, and this is for compliance caching, uh, necessity. Uh, we just, this summer completed a Google audit to ensure that our entire Google stuff system is in a good place and it's profitable right now. I'm so proud of the way we got it up to standards. Um, we are, we've purchased a new inventory system for our asset management district-wide national stack. So everything in the district will be accounted for and inventoried by hand by people coming in from QSTAR and Assetments. Don't have the data on that yet, we're supposed to be sharing with us this week. We've been cleaning up our network accounts and we are, um, working diligently towards this compliance, which is the National Institute Standards of Security. So, um, outside of that, we have a brand new office that I could not be proud to walk into. So thank you to Dr. Dean, it's gorgeous, I hope you all come visit. And, um, we are rolling out, um, student devices, every student, we have a lot of damage, very expensive. And the kids, not the fault, you know, it's, it's small and light and, you know, the textbooks are heavier and more sturdy and some of these very fragile substances. So every student K-12 is going to begin an up here of that. Um, these parents have funds to fund that because that's a, um, thing that will need to be replaced as time goes on. Um, and their families are all going to get an option to not purchase device insurance. And we are also trying to work through the code of conduct to hold our students and families a little bit more accountable to take care of that because it is a district property and we want it treated as much as something we loaned you, we want you to take care of it. We want it less for, for some five years, so. Yeah, it's a lot of stuff, but it's all, it's moving in a really good form and forward.
Very much so, I want to protect the suburbs.
Oh, yeah, but it might, it's not costing enough.
It's just two things, the insurance, how much do it cost families for? We have a final meeting with them tomorrow, it's looking between $33 and $38 and that will cover full replacement, um, other than lots, it will cover damage.
dollars and that will cover full replacement, um, other than loss, it will cover damage, it will cover theft. Um, if a student just left it though and walked away, then they're they're not going to cover it, there's this, but, um, if it kicks downstairs, we send it out, it covers that for her. So and that's innumerable times, there's no limit. It just seems that parents, that peace of mind with like, no matter what happens, it's not going to be their responsibility, we will get them a new one in their hand and it will be covered from the date they sign up for it and it's not for us to insure something for a whole year on that device. So it can come and go and you can get beaten up proportionally, but it will, we will have something in place for families that maybe that's that cost. Yes, so in the language, it is, um, mentioned in the contract and for any families who just might be a hunch for it, they're interested, and would you mention if you're on the green room, please contact us.
And then just one other question, we talked a while ago about the cyber security insurance and I know we had to have the two, two web-based education, all that. So are we getting, and at one point we had discussed it, I just didn't know where we were with that.
So we're down to just two companies are considering us. We have one and have a price tag. No, that's okay, I just, it's like, um, I think around eighteen thousand dollars for the one-year coverage of five million dollars. Um, we have one more company we are applying to, but they're not, their their question's been more stringent, I answered three or four more today. So I'm hoping to get their quote as soon as this week if possible. So as soon, I was waiting, I've got one more to tell me yes or no, and then we'll make our incentive work, but we do have it offered, we are in place for me, just very likely. I would, if you don't mind, just give me a couple more days to see, otherwise it can come a little lower and then.
Yeah, when you gave us that whole list of all the things you had published, I was thinking, okay, this is going to get us the control state insurance.
Exactly.
So, thank you so much.
And I would just say, you want to look at the website, the new banner is really cool because it has motion, uh, so it's really, it gives them, definitely a nice upgrade and a lot of easily accessible information, a lot of things that people like to find out about that button. And then you have the cable, these are lots of options and it's uh just very user-friendly, so yeah, very well done.
Much easier to find stuff you want quickly.
And please know that that is Roxanne Perry, she has taken this on to her baby and she's thrilled to do it and thrilled to empower her to do that, she loves it and she's a very excited and it is fun when you're giving people back parts of it, so she's, it is truly on her.
And you have patient systems, that's a good way.
Is the insurance going to be for all students or just those that didn't get the new ones this year?
K-12, it will be offered to anyone who wants, so it's not mandatory, but every single student, no matter how old your Chromebook is, it will cover, every Chromebook has the same price tag, it will cover one year of service on you.
And I hear good things about the um, the internship program that you've got going on, I hear some really good things and I think, I think the students are going to be excited once.
Once something's running fully, right? Thank you. Yeah, um, Shannon Cederox has been working with, um, five students that have been working with her, but even coming to meet me and even brought friends, um, and helping us so much. So it's a nice event for the summer, um, students that are interested in learning more product technology, getting trained to be Dallas certified or pure people, once this is off, oh yeah, rolling and, um, the kids, we're excited to give them the opportunity to be a crook, it's exciting for the help, so.
So it's a win-win.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So now it's not just fifty, I have to say.
Just three quick things, um, talking about the professional development that we've got over the summer, we actually offered co-teaching training, um, that was offered to any of the teachers that wanted to attend that are co-teaching this year. We had almost fifty different attend the sessions and everybody raved about it, I've had, um, emails, people saying, you know, thank you, this is going to be the best, we loved it, we've enjoyed it, can't wait to do this in our class. Um, so I was, and at one point they were dancing and building things and it was really great to see that many teachers that had that session here. Uh, the other thing is thank you to Doug's group, I know this system is very busy, but our family support center, um, we're moving furniture in, starting tomorrow, I believe, it has the glass windows still hanging to the two offices, so we're quickly moving forward with that. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention was not only do we have our three new UPK classes, we're moving forward with our integrated, one of them being integrated UPK class. So that huge application that Brian signed off on a lot of months ago, I've had four requests for additional information from State Ed, which we've been able to send them everything. Um, we've got some visit coming up, um, next week or the week after from State Ed and hopefully we'll get a couple of people to start, it's, um, in September. And that's something interesting, we want to continue, very excited about that.
Just super quick because it's a question of, uh, if you just have, um, very good start, um, overall, the whole, the whole, the whole, uh, we're, but, but we're very open and of course, um, all vendors support us are in the perfect course, so we have seen other districts, uh, issues, uh, not quite, but, uh, must have been major changes in the next ten days, uh, we are with open from a personal standpoint. Along those lines, I'll just speak, compliance, uh, most of the work, I mean, credit, um, we both have, uh, we spend, spend the teacher orientation in two days, so Monday the twenty-nine, we'll be in teammate orientation, we'll bring everyone who's new to the district, Lord Hunter's and the rest, um, together, um, that's going to be a kind of get-together, this is who the others in Aurora, uh, have off, bus ride, uh, then the next day we'll be, we'll be back just teachers, um, and then Wednesday we'll bring back just the aides, um, to make sure that they're feeling supported. Um, you'll get invitations of all of this, but on Thursday, first in the morning is kind of opening up the high school and then we, uh, get a fresh back in on Wednesday the seventh, when my map right, or that Wednesday is. Um, so if you are looking to stop by to meet new, everybody, come by on Monday the twenty-ninth, we're meeting teachers, come by all day on the thirtieth, waves all day on the thirty-first. Uh, opening day will be, um, auditorium, um, if you want to see all the sound faces, that on the side of it and you'll have more detail that just kind of, um, we'll make sure you get to.
Gradually.
Well, it's, it'll be ten days, I'm sick, it's almost like too good to reach, so some things go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, two, three, three, work. Interviewing process, lots of interviews, lots of, and, um, lots of really excellent candidates, so I think we've been very fortunate, because there is, there is a lot of competition out there for, especially for certain teaching positions and we've been very fortunate to find where it gives it for us, get interested in, think that this is the right place, and it'll be the time, um, even with our circumstances, really good process to make sure that they know that this is the right place, um, and then it's a good connection to that, because we're wanting to stay, so I really appreciate everyone's effort because it's been a team of, so, yeah, it's going very well.
Mr. White, something to say tonight, uh, Blackman, any, any?
One second.
Thank you, thank you for all your work and the work of your team, every summer. Yeah.
I think I did, to point out one thing that I could mention because we're not having more weeks, so we have, so, before that time, on the twenty-third of September, East Aurora Educational Foundation is having its annual, uh, this is a place where each year we honor a particular individual, both of them, education based on some criteria and things for establishment of the, uh, up to, to found the, uh, education of education. This year's recipient is Brian Sorecki, well, well-deserved, uh, reputation for, uh, for one of our finest professionals. So I urge all of you to, uh, to buy a ticket and come and sit to ring, uh, it'll be, uh, lots of fun and, uh, have a chance to congratulate him.
There are so many students who are so, that he got it.
Well, he had more recommendations from students.
There's so many students who says that are in the ring, yeah. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to community comments, you should have all received, uh, message from Michelle Kavanaugh, during the open meeting call. And, we have received an email from I G R teaching algebra. Okay, thank you. It came to us, but it wasn't even more for just that, right?
Right.
We all, thank you as well. And that went, that went to the line. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, moving on to Mr. Comments, I don't have all this, is there anyone? Okay, Mr. Decker.
Comment, um, I just wanted to say something about Dan.
I don't know if I can take anymore.
I wanted to sort of like bridge the fifth and third gap a little bit, so, um, in nineteen-sixty-nine, I had Dan for shop nature. And in, in those days, the boys took shop and the girls took home. So we were a class full of boys, twelve-year-olds, probably twenty of us. Dan would walk into class, we were, we were making sailboats, is, is our class project. Dan would walk into the class and say, all right, men, let's go to work. And we stand a little taller when Dan said, twelve-year-olds. Then in nineteen seventy-four, the spring of seventy-four, we were doing the music, the musical music in the high school. And Dan performed in the opening scene on the train with myself and and others, Dan used to get involved in some of the shows like that, high school, had a lot of fun. Fast forward for my, my experience with Dan, ninety-six, ninety-seven, I was the project manager, major project for East Aurora, Dan was administrator, and I had a great time coordinating with Dan on all the basic work, so got to work with Dan in that capacity as a instructor, project manager, Dan as administrator. And in, um, around ninety-nine to two thousand eight, um, we served on the Board of Education together here in East Aurora. It was an honor to be able to do that. Um, and my three sons had Dan as a teacher coming through the high school. So, you know, I just want to tip my hat to Dan for all he's done for East Aurora families and say we all appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Steve. And, and your, your comments reflect right back to you and all you've done since, uh, since, uh, uh, before I came, and your family as well, so, uh, you've all been terrific supporters of the schools over the years. And Betsy is now president of the, uh, East Aurora Foundation, so it's just, it's just a delight to work with the Deckers.
Yeah, so, anyway, thanks for giving me the chance to.
Thank you, appreciate it, Chris, I appreciate it, that's all, and all your best, good night and good morning. Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to be best aboard this evening? Thank you all for being here. We are moving on to item nine, report the discussion items. Uh, we have completed IP, do we have, uh, anything from the business topic that we need to hold? We'll hold it, okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item ten, is there any legislation to come before the board? Nope, thank you. Moving on to item eleven, the consent, are there anyone who wishes to review the status of this item properly? Okay, hearing none, I have a motion to approve the consent item. Move by Mr. Robinson, second, second of my business, discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Sentenced? Period six zero. Item twelve, items requiring board action, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve for a second reading the policies on sexual harassment of students, dignity for all students, alcohol and tobacco drugs and other substances, students, touch rules, searches and interrogations of students, discipline of students presumed to have disability, suspension of students, hating of students, corporal punishment, emergency interventions. I have a motion. Move by Mr. Cassidy, second?
Second.
Second of my business, Daniel, discussion. If you're with Dan, Mr. Matt, ready for, for the caps at all stores?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Just, just to be clear with the readings, the second readings from last time and the second readings this time gets worked out with reconciliation of the policies that are referenced in code of conduct and that, so now those two things will come together as we continue this work.
Yes.
So that's, here's a.
Part, part of why these were popular, popular to keep to get through so that we had that alignment, just, thank you very much. On the other discussion, all those in favor? I, opposed, abstention, period six zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve for a first reading the addition of, addition of the following policies. One curriculum establishment, development and evaluation, selection of instructional materials, objection to instructional materials. I have a motion.
Oh, move.
Move by Mr. Cassidy, second of my business, discussion. I really like the way that these, they've been updated. Okay, all those in favor? I, opposed, abstentions, period six zero. Item C, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve for first reading the removal of the policies, the older policies, curriculum, curriculum development and resources, valuation of instructional programs, selection of library and audiovisual materials, objection to instructional materials. I have a motion. Move by Mr. Cassidy, second of my business, Daniel, discuss that.
Just a point of order, I do remove the policies also required to read, just like yeah, once, that's why you're doing this, and we're just, now in this process, we saw the helpful, the, so it's a more part of our normal, just, that.
Thank you, and they have removals because it is not just content, but also numbers that is getting added.
It's just a much cleaner process rather than trying to do the reconciliation and talk about us, so basically, even if you're more or less just rolling forward and updating it, just separate the old, put it new, it's just cleaner than all the revisions that we're doing, it's just too hard to track what was and wasn't, so now we have, we're literally swapping, everything new, we're taking up old, even if we're doing the same, we're still going to file that process, and just number and title.
Thank you, and appreciate the note on the process, so everyone.
I, I'd also appreciate the fact that it's, uh, the user, as they're changed or posted on our website, uh, and, and also the searchable docs, uh, it's, for me, I, I always kind of having that book, you know, because you could, you can, you dive into the book and you can find policy very quickly, the, the, the new system makes it, uh, just as easy, you can, you can find a policy and you can search it, uh, for, I just said, for bond, I searched the word annual to try to see how many references there were to annual reports that the board should, should see. And, uh, uh, so it's, it's a very friendly, usable document.
I will say two things, one, you and I have very different definitions of, of, of fund, but, um, we are still struggling with the old manual and the new manual, and so right now, there's the online Google Doc, which is searchable, has some links in the board docs manual. I'm willing to preach some lies, by next year, everything will be in board docs, then really only, like, everything is linked now, but it's just messy, we're going to have one searchable, movable spot where it always is, it's all, so that's in the, in the, in the.
That's great, thanks.
Thank you very much. All of the favor?
Aye.
I have opposed, sentience, period six zero. Item D, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three district-wide safety plan as presented at the, uh, July thirteenth public hearing and detailed in your background. I have a motion. Move by Mr. Stilhaller, second, second of my business, Daniel, discussion. All of the favor?
Aye.
I, opposed, sentience, period six zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the revised provisions to the amendment. It's got to be a short debate, okay. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the amendment to the terms and conditions of employment for the assistant superintendent. Okay, move by Mr. Robinson, second, second of my business, discussion. All of the favor? I, opposed, abstention, period six zero. Item X, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Nicola Silvas to a long, one point of long-term building substitute teacher position as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion. Move by Mr. Stilhaller, second of my business, Cassidy, discuss. Second of my business, Cassidy, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Sentences? Period six zero. Item G, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Madeline Peters to position one-point-oh FTEs, long-term substitute elementary teacher as detailed in your agenda. I have motion. Moved by Mr. O'Weiler. Second? Second, second of my business, Scotty, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sentenced? Period six zero. Item H, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the school brackets and lunch prices for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year as detailed in your agenda. I have motion.
Sure.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second? Second of my business, O'Weiler, discussion.
The, uh, please, we were able to do this without having prices, but I mentioned at an earlier meeting, uh, has there been any further, uh, development at federal level for extending free lunch programs? But, uh, you know, they've got something called, it's fed out, it's, it's under, or I, I don't know what they call them, but it was a missed law because what it really meant was kid will have to start paying. Uh, that's what they should have called it. Uh, same number of people voted for this, otherwise, uh, the, uh, uh, they, you know, just hope that our local workers and counselors can, uh, can take the time to, uh, to make direct. And that, that parents who may qualify for this to make sure that they get the back of the state and then they fill out those times. So that the children, uh, uh, who qualify get to reduce or free price of, uh, lunch, uh, breakfast. As it being, uh, we don't think too much about hunger in a, in a relative, you have to look hard in the world, but, uh, but it's still there. It's, it's still, I'll be just talking to the kids, we're collecting center. Uh, so thank you for whatever we can do to, uh, to monitor and track the children. And thank you to the principals of making sure the child who has, uh, uh, who has forgotten their money or has fundraised or another, not able to, uh, to get the, uh, what they need for lunch, to make, to make sure they don't go hungry at the.
So we are not anticipating, um, the free lunch thing for all. And we also have a bad company, right, and everybody, um, both direct members of community and the last command, we have our workers, um, who target each child for those needs. And we've done that, or we're not getting any back from, um, but we're going, uh, looking at pricing approach.
That's good, because there are people who've never participated before who may qualify them. But at the same time, there are those who have participated in this and who may, you know, just like, you know, whatever.
And you are.
And you are. This person, this George, business office is, 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 and it's, it's kind of, it's kind of process. Accessible. When he saw the. Shot of it and just kind of directly hit the qualified, because, you know, please welcome to the board. Simple as possible. It is one. I've never given it a balance. It's frustrating. It's hard to understand if you're qualified or not. So they really have, they've certainly efforts to give message out. So working with, hopefully have.
Thank you.
And finally question, as we've done in the past, the students that receive their free lunch, there's nothing in terms of money. Obviously, there's no way that people know that.
No, it's, it's even better when it's never been, because it's still, it's been sent with us calling cashless. Everyone has four-digit code. And they have their code in like first, behind you, and they're going to support codes. So there's not even the way to log in, but your phone, like, back of the system is. Everyone gets their four digits and it goes on stop for one.
And if for some reason a child doesn't have money in their account or whatever, they still get their lunch.
There's no lunch. There's not, you don't get a, but no, it's not, it's not for lunch. We do have an oversight, an audit, a detection in there. So we go, now we start notifying, at a point, it's cut off. The kids in the office just started reaching out to parent parents. Obviously, it goes significantly, we, but it's never, it's never indexed.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And, and just something interesting is that the milk is more. Why, I'm, and I'm reading this correctly?
For the free and reduced.
Right.
That's if you buy milk separately, because the milk is included.
Is it? Okay. All right. So you don't have to get it separate, because that's why I'm just buying that.
If you, you buy the.
The free and reduced.
Free and reduced meal or the regular priced meal. You get whatever's with that meal. The, the milk is just by, it's a lot of kids, they've got us in. Well, one. If I didn't want to go up for incentive. Depending on the reduced price, you can put a quarter down, you get the whole lunch and the milk.
Right.
Yeah, so forty cents is more than enough for us to collect. And where, where is the line of this thing? Anything? We have a certain.
We're going to be using that, that's why plus to kind of create more variety. And for our local produce, most of the stuff that.
That's right. More vegetables, more.
And we're using the same company that we have in the past.
Yeah.
With, with, um, put a positive money online.
High school bodies. Person touch. Yep. For student, all of our under-study places, you know, starts.
The process is the best.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed. Abstentions. Period six zero. Item I, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education set the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school tax rates as detailed in your agenda. I have motion. Move by Mr. O'Wiler. Second by Mr. Robinson. Discussion.
Mr. Ross, perhaps you could point out the taxing fact of.
Yeah, we want, I'm sorry. They actually came in the order that we.
I'm sorry, did we?
Yeah.
The, the, the original.
Levy. To the voter was, looked like a two point nine percent increase. But it says in your note, Brian, that the actual tax increase in the town of East Aurora, one point seven percent. So people thought it was going to be two point nine and it came in at one percent.
Yeah, so, so from the, 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 the average taxpayer in the town of Aurora, which is the most of our taxpayers. I, their, their taxes, their actual tax rate and their work taxes. Which is fun, our, our goal a few years ago was to try to get this under. You know, and, and the, the levy is less significant to the individual taxpayer than the rate is what it solves in their local buildings. The levy is totally amount of the entire community. So when there's construction in the community, such as all these new houses that are going up and, and other improvements to businesses, though that additional assessment in the community in, in town of Aurora allows the rate to be lower because of the, because of more product. So, so it's a win-win for, for, for taxpayers. And it's good news that we managed to get our budget under control to the extent that the increase, especially in this year of high inflation.
Thank you for bringing that up again.
Yeah, I think it's, it's kind of a. A nod to the idea that controlled growth, they appear that towards the town are allowing to help this to happen. So the, 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 this is like as well, that really helps, it, it acts as an obstacle. It's so. All that's that you could put in the unit.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, how do we let the community know that that is the actual number we're about to pass and to potentially, to get on the cap facility project, which is going to even more than one percent? But then in mind, how do we let the community know that the budget that was passed was not the two point nine? How do we let them know that? So in the community, we are aware of that.
Probably do a recap and the challenge, you know, just to say how the process works, where we are with the budget, how that worked out, and then where we're going with the facilities and, and what that means, that one percent for us. It will take some time to explain that it won't exceed one percent and what that means to the average taxpayer.
Put that on the website, perhaps?
Oh, yeah, sure. It's always posted on the website.
All those in favor? I opposed. Abstentions. Period six zero. Item J, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the East Aurora Union School of Code of Conduct, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as detailed in your agenda. I have motion. Move by Mr. Daniel. Second by Mr. Robinson. Discussion. Thank you very much for all of the work that was a big lift in the short amount of time. All those in favor? I opposed. Abstentions. Period six zero. Item K, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the novelty books and detailed in your agenda. I have motion. Move by Mr. Robinson. Second by Mrs. O'Wiler. Discussion. All those in favor? I opposed. Abstentions. Period six zero. Item L, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the disaster recovery and incident response plan as detailed in your attachment. Move by Mr. Cassidy. Second? Second by Mr. O'Wiler. Discussion.
I just want to thank Mr. Eizano and him for the work on this. I don't think this was in the laundry list of things that you mentioned earlier in, in reading through this. I appreciate the, the time and effort it took.
Absolutely. It was so thorough and so reassuring out of all of that one place. Thank you.
It's just, it's very, it's very essential and the, the, our auditors have asked for this for a while now. And so again, I extend my appreciation as well for having that and, and for its thorough job.
All those in favor? Opposed. Abstentions. Period six zero. And, oh, item. Two. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education, a senior partner to a probationary one point O FTE position as the senior school counselor beginning September first, twenty twenty-two, as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion. Move by Mrs. O'Wiler. Second by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion. All those in favor? I opposed. Opposed. Abstentions. Period six zero. Uh, we did, right? Yes. Are there any other items from before the board meeting? I have one request, I, I don't know if anyone else had to mention, I was moving a September board meeting.
Yeah, we definitely. Open houses. First, uh, bills, open house and every twenty first. Sure. Um, and we have, uh, on the fourteenth. And I think we have a park game. Uh, open house or the park.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. And what is the, uh, high school? Uh, so, yeah. So those four, they took, they, so, yeah. We, we, we started early in the year and it's always crazy. You know, so we always decided to push it out a few weeks just to give us some breather. Uh, I mean, we can move it off from twenty eighth to, uh, to November day.
But we have one board member request is.
I'm the only one who brought it up, I think. And, and I have no problem with, they, they, if you think that's the best time to have the meeting, then, then let's have that meet, the meeting. I, I only ask the question of whether that, the time from the seventeenth of August to the twentieth of September being, what, six, seven weeks? Uh, that, and whether, whether it might be problematic from a standpoint of business that has to be taken care of. So as long as, as we've got a plan and it's going to work, we can always call a special meeting if something, if something can't wait. But I, I didn't, by bringing it up, I didn't mean that I wanted to see a change. I just wanted to be sure that we took into account the fact that some of us have a long period of time and we might end up with some business that be flat.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mister Flowers did make a request, he did not say why.
Oh, he brought it up.
Yes, so we had your, your comment about whether or not there were, we had too much time in between the pieces. Anyone else have?
Maybe he has conflict.
You know, just get a conflict.
He can't be here tonight, so, so that's a good reason to change.
It sounds like the calendar is incredibly tight. Yeah. Who else have, you have a conflict?
Yeah, which is why originally I'm setting up the board calendar like two months.
Yeah, and the calendar was already tight. So we're down two board members.
What's wrong with the twenty first, was that open house?
I am not available this twenty first. There's no. I think this, the end of September is.
Did you do anything like on September fifteenth?
I think you're right early on where everyone's on the water. But.
I, I. And I, I.
Your opportunity. Okay, that's going to make your challenge. So I think we assume we're down you.
Right. At the time of the meeting.
Can I throw something out there?
Yeah.
The fifth grade open house, fourteenth. That one starts at six thirty and we anticipate it being over with by seven thirty. So we would want to consider maybe starting a little later.
Later meeting. But then would I miss my, what, twelfth middle school open house?
Also, it would be down by seven thirty.
It should be. The only problem is we were planning on having this all exposed with lights and having visitors come in here to look up.
Well, could we make a multi-purpose room?
Yep. There's now, I just like.
Usually, to your point, Dan, there's hires that need to be done. We usually do a morning meeting at the end of August between the two, but six weeks is a long time. What?
I'm not. I call a special meeting, I would have when I call it. I don't, you're right. Normally we have our late summer hiring and we have to do that. Right, no, we can, that's, don't do it on behalf of personnel. If you, I'm, I'm, I'm the spotlight, I can do anything. Normally we have a great resignation, which is why we push things out, but I have, as of today, um.
Do, uh, what is, we'll start with the board, the fourteenth. Later meeting on the fourteenth, I don't hear anybody saying no. As long as I get you a ten open house on, okay. That is a possibility for you to change. So now will we do executive session? Hold on, hold on, does this work for the administrator and everybody else?
Yeah, yeah, that should work.
I mean, I, I would.
Well, it sounds like all.
We gained two board members, we messed up our time and we made Mr. Cassidy.
Oh, um, it's our.
We have nothing. We've got the twenty eighth as far as. I would, I would suggest we look at something created for executive session so that we have a group of participants. We may have to break that up separately if we have anything about that.
Sure.
That we're going to lose somebody somewhere. So we've got folks that have a tight schedule, they're going to need to not be there until seven thirty and have a second session. Right.
Point, yeah. Section, yes.
We don't have a long.
Start the meeting at seven thirty, keep it a very short agenda. And then, like tonight. And, and then, and then take it, have a one hour executive session.
Don't laugh. This is like, I thought I was going to be pushing it for finishing at nine. We're starting a new project. Is that possible for everyone? Seven thirty is a possible, like, executive session. Good. I'm pushing you in the morning. All right. Thank you, everyone. Then, um, next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Wednesday, September fourteenth at seven thirty P.M. Following the next school open house. Where will it be? That is to be determined by the administrators when they decide it is most, where it is most convenient for them. We will go where we are. How's that?
That's all.
We're here to accommodate.
We can probably do it. We can probably do it in here, we'll just have these chairs cleared out and then at seven thirty, right before the meeting starts. We'd like to highlight the potential project.
That would be kind of very. Anything else? There are several items on the agenda. Um, I would ask everyone to contemplate the Ms. Convention. It is in here too, so there's, um, up there a couple of overnights in there. I think it's very beneficial that a couple of board members can go, two to three, it's a great number. Then Buffalo and we, we can all go and it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to run and grow together. But, um, some representation and information gathering is welcome. So contemplate, look at your very full schedules and, um, remember board members, if you have any questions, please attack any one of us. I'm going to get the expression of the. Great. They have. They have folks to adjourn. Move by Mrs. Cassidy. Second? Second by Mr. Robinson, our twenty eight veteran. All those in favor? I opposed. Period zero. Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you.